Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of USD 453 Board of Education. I'd like to have you all please turn your phones off if you happen to have them on or silence them during the meeting and turn the lights out. We'll do roll call for Mrs. Murphy.
Here.
Mrs. Wells.
Here.
Mrs. Price.
Here.
Mrs. Overby.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Reed.
Here.
I'm Mike Carney. Stand for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you please take the District Mission Statement? Oh, I'm sorry. We have Board of Education Individual Commitments. Mrs. Murphy?
I don't have it on here, so I'm pulling it up on my towel.
You commit to...
I commit to facilitating the wonders and to ask more questions.
Mrs. Wells?
I commit to not agreeing to push through ideas until they have gone through the discernment phase, earning a majority of support.
Mrs. Overby?
I commit to sharing my wonder with more clarity and share my discernment to provide thoughtful feedback.
Mrs. Wilson?
I commit to working on my wonders without letting it overtake my focus.
Mrs. Reed?
I'll work on not discounting the importance of my enabling genius as being nice.
Mrs. Price?
I commit to sharing ideas and achieving results for positive change.
And I commit to being open-minded and attentive to the ideas of others for the good of the whole and staying focused on the task at hand.
Thank you, President Carney. Just a reminder to speak clearly into the microphone for those listening at home. On to the District Mission Statement. The mission of Leavenworth Public Schools is to prepare every student for success in every classroom, every day.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
We've got a motion to adopt the agenda, and Mrs. Wells, second by Mrs. Murphy. All in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero. No patron input? Two?
All right. On behalf of the Board, we are pleased that you have joined us tonight to celebrate student and staff achievement, hear informational presentations and reports, and observe consideration of policy decisions and administrative recommendations specific to the Leavenworth Unified School District. We set aside time at each regularly scheduled Board meeting to hear from the public. Comments should address Board policies with procedures or administrators established to carry out those policies as opposed to individual complaints to investigate and resolve. Please understand that while Board members will listen to and carefully consider all your comments, Board members will not immediately respond to questions either verbally or through gestures, for example, raising hands in response to questions, nor will they engage in dialogue of answer and response during the patron input time this evening. This is not an appropriate time or place for patrons to make comments of a personal nature about any district employee or student by name. Persons making comments which violate the privacy rights of district employees or students will be asked to terminate their remarks. If speakers have concerns specific to an individual student or staff member, please make an appointment with the Superintendent. Those concerns will be documented and shared with the Board. Each patron is reminded they have three minutes to speak or will be given notice when 15 seconds remain. If a group is attendance with the same interests, we ask that a spokesperson be appointed to deliver the group's message. As unified Board committed to desired outcomes for our school community, we ask that comments not be directed at individual Board members but addressed to the Board as a whole, and thank you for taking time to address district business with the Board.
Okay. First up, we have...I'm going to try my best with this name. Kat Schwinnison? Schwinnison? Did I murder that, or is she here?
My name is Kat Schwinnison, and I'm a senior who is deeply involved in the JROTC program, and I am proud to be from Leavenworth High School. But a few months ago, a serious issue caught my attention. Did you know that every year, Leavenworth High School financially supports the killing of cats? Yes, you heard that right, cats. Students at Leavenworth High School in an anatomy class participate in cat dissections. These cats come from the Carolina Biological Supply Company. It is important to make it known that these cats do not die of natural causes. They are bred in unregulated places and are killed by the thousands yearly. Many undercover investigations from biological supply companies have been done in which it was revealed that cats are purchased from breeders, suffer inhumane treatment before they are killed, and many reports have cited they are still moving when formaldehyde is put into their bodies. Do we at Leavenworth High School truly want to support this barbaric practice? I urge the School Board to end its support of cat dissections for two main reasons. One, dissection teaches students that animals are just classroom tools that are to be used and discarded. Dissections teach a profound disrespect for life that it purports to study in biology, along with fostering conflict and confusion in impressionable young people. It is a known fact that stimulating tendencies of cruelty towards animals in childhood can correlate with dangerous antisocial behavior in adulthood. Should we at Leavenworth High Schools truly be perpetuating this behavior through dissections? Dissection is also simply bad science. Studies show that students are less interested in science after being forced to dissect. Dissection is an archaic cruel way to teach biology and anatomy. Many educators from universities and high schools agree that animal dissections are simply irrelevant to science education in the 21st century. In fact, students often learn more using more relevant methods like computer programs, physical models, charts, and other digital media. These alternatives can be used year after year, helping save thousands of dollars to help fund other student programs and activities. I have started a petition which has over 50 student signatures who stand against this barbaric practice happening in our schools. I will be sending the petition and further information to School Board members. I ask you again, should we at Leavenworth High School be supporting this practice considering its effect on our...
15 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have James Santy. Is James here? No? Okay, moving on. On to consideration of Kansas Homeland Security Region L Hazard Mitigation Plan. That's going to be Mr. Magah.
Yep. Mr. Magah, if you want to make your way up here, I always try to put yes at the front end of the agenda, as you know. This is actually a five-year renewal, so predates my time and a couple of you as well. But nonetheless, it's a countywide effort, as I understand it, which includes many municipalities and does require, if we want to be a part of this, a public blessing, public vote. So I've asked Chuck to be here tonight to give a brief overview and certainly take any questions. So, Mr. Magah, thank you for being there.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with Dr. Adams as we work through the process. The process is the mitigation plan. The mitigation plan will eventually be signed off by the Board Accounting Commissioners, but beforehand, we have to have all the municipalities to make sure they've looked at the goals and the objectives that have been set out for each entity. USD 453 is one of those, and that's why I'm here tonight. To understand that the mitigation process is just goal-oriented, it is not something that is in concrete that you have to do, gives us five years to work through that process. And each entity has had an opportunity to state what they would like to see as a mitigation project within their own entity. I believe they have the document that has all the goals for USD 453 had provided to us as a county. And this is a large working group that we had working through this process. And understand how the mitigation project works. Every time there's a federal declared disaster, 2% of those funds is put aside for mitigation projects that USD 453 would have the opportunity to apply for. It's a 75-25 split. When I say 75-25, 75% comes of federal government, 25 would be for USD 453. There's a number of ways that that could be worked through. But then there's some goals in there that don't have a cost that the federal government would support, but it's a project that USD 453, when we were working through the program, felt it was necessary to try to work towards that goal at the cost of the Board. And a lot of it is just utilizing staff time and things of this nature. It's not an actual physical dollar that goes on to it for budgetary purposes. My purpose here today is to see if, one, if the Board has any questions myself as we work through this process. The actual document is 383 pages long, and it's not very good reading, but it's interesting reading if you're looking at mitigation projects. And for the general public, understand that mitigation is how can we provide a project that will keep an incident from happening again or work through. And one of the goals in there was, for an example, was place a generator in a school that would be federally supported through that application process. Understand that the applications are competitive, but I feel confident that we've always been very successful in Leavenworth County when we assist those agencies working through that mitigation projects. So we need to have an adoption from USD 453 for their portion of the plan to move forward before I present this to the Board of County Commissioners.
All right. Before I read the resolution, are there any questions for Mr. Magah? Okay. Mr. President, I move the adoption of the following resolution. Resolution 24/25-020, adopting the Kansas Homeland Security Region L Hazard Mitigation Plan. Whereas the Board of Education Unified School District Number 453, Leavenworth County, Kansas, recognizes the threat that natural hazards pose to people and property within our community; and whereas undertaking hazard mitigation actions will reduce the potential for harm to people and property from future hazard occurrences; and whereas the U.S. Congress passed Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, emphasizing the need for pre-disaster mitigation of potential hazards; whereas the Disaster Mitigation Act made available hazard mitigation grants to state and local governments; whereas an adopted hazard mitigation plan is required as a condition of future funding for mitigation projects under multiple Federal Emergency Management Agency pre- and post-disaster mitigation grant programs; and whereas the Board of Education of USD 453, Leavenworth County, Kansas, fully participate in the FEMA prescribed mitigation planning process to prepare this multi-hazard mitigation plan; whereas the Kansas Division of Emergency Management and FEMA Region 7 officials have reviewed the Kansas Homeland Security Region L Hazard Mitigation Plan and approved it contingent upon this official adoption of the participating governing body; whereas the Board of Education of USD 453, Leavenworth County, Kansas, desires to comply with the requirements of the Disaster Mitigation Act and to augment its emergency planning efforts by formally adopting the Kansas Homeland Security Region L Hazard Mitigation Plan; whereas adoption by the governing body for the Board of Education of USD 453, Leavenworth County, Kansas, demonstrates the jurisdiction's commitment to fulfilling the mitigation goals and objectives outlined in this plan; whereas the adoption of this legitimizes the plan and authorizes responsible agencies to carry out the responsibilities under the plan. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of USD 453, Leavenworth County, Kansas, adopts the Kansas Homeland Security Region L Hazard Mitigation Plan as an official plan, and be it further resolved, the Board of Education of USD 453, Leavenworth County, Kansas, will submit this adoption resolution to the Kansas Division of Emergency Management and FEMA Region 7 officials to enable the plan's final approval, adopted by the Board of Education on this 14th day of April 2025. That was the motion.
Question? Do we need a vote, do we?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you.
We would request a vote, please, yes.
Can I have an alibi question before we vote? Do you mind? Got a minute? So I read through this whole thing, and so are we concerned...we get federal funding, right? You get it?
You folks get it direct.
Is that safe to get these days? That's what I'm concerned about.
I can't speak on the federal government's side.
Okay. All right. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I just saw that, and I said, well, it's really nice, but we don't get any money. I know how you put for the school district, but, okay, that's all. I'm sorry.
Well, I have a little bit of an alibi for that, too. Say 75-25 split. Federal government's going to pick up the cost of 75%, while we're going to pick up the cost of 25%. But is that something that could change? I mean...
The way the Stafford Act...
We see inflation, we see everything else. 25% could have been $25,000 a year ago, it could be $25,000 now. So I'm just kind of curious what that 75-25% looks like.
It's going to depend on the project. Understand that if you got a $100,000 project, 75,000 of it's going to come from that 25,000. So it's whatever the base of that project's going to be. As far as the 75-25, that is cut and stoned currently in the Stafford Act, and I believe that that's in the resolution that you guys have...
It was, but I know things change consistently.
I do understand.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get back to the vote to accept the resolution. You already said...
Yeah, motion and a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
It's like seven, zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Magah.
Recognition.
All right. President Carney, on to my personal favorite for the evening, and hence the reason why I believe several people in the room. We've got a couple of great groups to honor tonight, and I've got two members ready to go on those certificates. So up first is First Sergeant George Sutton, presenting the JROTC Rifle Team. First Sergeant, if you would, please make your way up to the podium.
That's scary. Going to get applause. And I told, we started off with a...our team started off with doing rifle team competition, and each region, we had over 100 teams. And these guys right here, we were able, first time qualified, four teams to go Ohio, the first time in program's history. And I'm going to recognize all of my rifle team guys. Stand up, please. Including you, ladies, and Ms. Vega, y'all need to stand up, too. You, too, Ms. Vega. Eek, my rifle team commander, come up, please. We got to Ohio this year with a little bus travel. Got stucked for a couple of bus rides. Our team labeled qualified four teams, and we took 7th in a region, 25th, and 39th, and 50th in our region. So we took four slots out of 50 teams, and right now, we're ranked 39th in the nation. So this is my rifle team commander right here, Captain, so she did a lot of the work. I appreciate her. All right, you want to speak real quick?
I mean, First Sergeant basically said everything, but yeah, rifle team, we're kind of an underdog in the JROTC program. We don't get all of the big glory sometimes, but we're there, and we're very glad to be here, and we put in so much work, and we're really proud to be noticed tonight. So thank you.
From the Leavenworth USD 453, 2005 Certificate of Appreciation, this certificate is proudly presented to the JROTC Rifle Team for positively representing Leavenworth High School in regional and national championship, and is signed by Mike Carney, the President of the Board, and Kellen Adams, the Superintendent of Schools.
Pictures are required. Thank you, Rifle Team, and again, congratulations. The second group that was on the agenda tonight was the LHS Pioneer Bowling Team who qualified for state. Unfortunately, our kids and our coaches are all very busy, and so they were not able to be here this evening, but still certainly want to give them the applause that is due. And then we'll work with Mr. Potter to see if we can get them here maybe at another meeting, as I do want to give them their time under the sun as well. So your third and final group is the LHS Pioneer Wrestling, both boys and girls, head coach, math teacher by day, coach at night, Bill Ernesti.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for bringing these wonderful men and young women and acknowledge what they have accomplished. We started out the year, we always start out with a slogan that we're going to go with, and our slogan was, "We are Leavenworth." We see it too much in the halls with people that aren't involved in stuff, that they're not proud to be from Leavenworth High School. And we wanted to change that whole atmosphere. So everything that we printed up this year, any type of uniform that we had on, we wanted to represent our community. We wanted to show that we're proud to be from Leavenworth, we're proud to be a part. And I was very impressed as the year went on, when you see their accomplishments, I gave you on the little placemat, people started to recognize Leavenworth, and that was something that we wanted to do for the community, that's what we wanted to do for our high school. We got brought in because we qualified for the state tournament, but I like to talk about things that have absolutely nothing to do with wrestling. We have student athletes on our wrestling team. Our ladies know that students, being a student comes first, our guys know that being a student's come first. Our team GPA, whenever you put them in collectively, is right out of 3.5 GPA, boys and girls. And that's something that I feel is exciting. But more importantly, there's two athletes that we have on our team, and I won't ever single them out, but they had below a point something GPA as freshmen. They weren't involved in school, they didn't really like school. And then they got involved, and all of a sudden, schooling became important to them. And we're celebrating their 3.0 GPA and their 4.0 GPA this semester, respectively. And that's something that we're extremely proud of. The next thing that I want to talk about is how we became a family. You can't accomplish impossible things like these teams have accomplished without being a family. You work hard together, you do everything together, whenever you lose, your heart's just broke, and your family's there for you. And for us to qualify 11 girls for the state tournament, that's unheard of. It's people, whenever you bring in the big numbers that we brought in here today, you have to...this isn't normal. 11 girls qualifying for the state tournament, they had to fight, not all of them had winning records, they had to put together the perfect tournaments to get to go, and I would say that whole family aspect is what got all 11 girls there. If you look at the guys' team, the way they pushed each other, the way they were there to pick each other up, the guys that qualified for state were hurting so bad for the guys that didn't qualify for state because they were trying to keep up with the girls' team because they're like, "God, they got 11, we got to keep up with this." But when push came to shove, we were a family. I want you to imagine having a baseball player go out for baseball this year, and they didn't have a glove. We bought them a glove and said, "Go try out for baseball." Ask a football player to go out, and you're going to go out for football this year, since it's your first year, it's high school, but you go ahead and try it. Well, that's what these wrestlers, some of them, accomplished. We have some of these wrestlers who are borderline at the cusp of placing at the state tournament. They've wrestled one or two years, and they're catching kids that have wrestled since they were eight years old. I couldn't be more proud of this group. I can't wait to see where this group is going to go, but it's all the things that they do. I was pleased to see that we had them stand up, that they were part of the first celebration with the rifle team. I want them to be a part. I want, "We are Leavenworth," for us to stand tall, all of us, and have our chest sticking out and be proud of our school. And that's something I think our wrestling program did this year in the high school, that's something they did on the community. I was just, I could not be more proud, and that's why I wanted to make sure I could come and talk about it. When I call out their names, I would like them to stand. I'm going to call out their name and grade, just to kind of put things in perspective for you. I'm going to call out the guys' team first. Gunner Hamilton, 9th grade. And just to keep from the board meeting to last forever, we're going to just go ahead and read all the names for the guys, we'll all clap for them, and then we'll read all the names for the girls. Jaden Dow Ripple, 9th grade. Sam Vasquez, 10th grade. Cam Turner, 10th grade. Blaze Overbeat, 11th grade. Arneaz Woods, our lone senior. Patrick McKinney, 10th grade. Grayson Klein, 11th grade. Let's give the guys' team a round of applause. Gentlemen, please continue to stand because we are Leavenworth, and we're going to stand out of respect to the ladies. Kaylee Norris, 10th grade. Giada Milner, 10th grade. Mackenzie Waters, 11th grade. Karatina Vega, 9th grade. Renaya Marion, 10th grade. Lindsay Lopez, 10th grade. Charlotte Jackson, 9th grade. Ava Babbage, 10th grade. Kaylee Infinger, 10th grade. Nicola Williams, our lone senior, 12th grade. Head Coach Bodie, apologize for not being here tonight, but Head Coach Bodie coaches a lot of things, and Head Coach Bodie's being the head coach of baseball tonight. But I just have to say, I couldn't be more proud, and I can't wait to see what this group of people bring to Leavenworth and to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Those were some wonderful words for a very special group. Leavenworth USD 453 Certificate of Achievement, 2025. This certificate is proudly, proudly presented to boys and girls wrestling for excellence displayed during competition at the 2025 Kansas State Wrestling Championship. Signed, Mr. Mike Carney, Board of Education President, and Dr. Kellen J. Adams, Superintendent of Schools. Congratulations.
Girls first, and then boys. You want girls to tell them.
Mr. President, I move we go into executive session to discuss non-elected personnel pursuant to the exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, or COMA, in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, and that we return to open session in this room at 7:03.
Second.
First, the board will invite Dr. Adams, Amy Sloan, and Isaac Caverly into the meeting.
Good motion by Mrs. Price Gunn, executive session, second by Mrs. Murphy, all in favor?
Aye.
7-0. Let's roll. Motion by Mrs. Price, we've raised the ministry by, what was the total?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. Second by Miss Murphy, all in favor?
Aye.
7-0.
Okay, let me have a resolution. Motion for final action of the Board of Education in regard to the termination of a teacher's contract where no hearing was held. Resolution 24/25-021. Whereas on the 27th day of February 2025, the Board of Education of USD 453, Leavenworth County, Kansas, by resolution duly adopted, took action to notify Jerome Riscovay with the board's intent that his contract as a teacher for this district be terminated on the 27th day of February 2025. And whereas pursuant to the resolution, the clerk of the Board of Education gave written notice to Jerome Riscovay that it was intent of the Board of Education to terminate his contract of employment on the 27th day of February 2025, that he was employed on the 6th day of August 2018, and that he was entitled to a hearing before a hearing officer if he so requested in writing to the clerk of the Board of Education within 15 days after delivery of the notice. And whereas no request for a hearing was received from Jerome Riscovay by the clerk of the Board of Education within 15 days after delivery of the notice to Jerome Riscovay. Whereas after extensive consideration and thorough discussion of the matter, the board has determined that the matter should be resolved as here and after indicated. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of USD 453, Leavenworth County, Kansas, that the current teaching contract of Jerome Riscovay be terminated on the 27th day of February 2025, that the clerk of the Board of Education give Jerome Riscovay a signed copy of this resolution in person or by United States mail, adopted by the Board of Education of USD 453, Leavenworth County, Kansas, this 14th day of April 2025.
Do you understand the resolution?
Second.
Has the resolution been read? By, second by Mrs. Murphy, all in favor?
Aye.
7-0.
All right. Mr. President, I move we go into executive session to discuss negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, or COMA, and that we return to open session in this room in 20 minutes at 7:58. The board will invite Dr. Adams, Amy Sloan, Amy Gertruyer, and Beth Medics to the meeting. The first few minutes will be a bio break.
Do you do a minute?
7:58.
I second.
Firework, I did the other second.
So Price Overbee.
Mrs. Overbee?
Yes.
I'm giving you the second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
7-0.